Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 12th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. And in continuation of yesterday's Veterans Day celebrations, I'd like to take a moment to honor those service people from both Blackstone and Millville who have served our country, who are currently serving our country, and who will in the future answer that call. We are free because of the service that they have given to us over the years. So having said that, I'll ask that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I am Jane Reggio. I am from the town of Millville. And I would like to introduce the other members of the school committee and the people on the call this evening.
Erin Venaco, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Sarah Larkin, Millville.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
I got Carrie, and then I don't know who went after that. Karen, you're muted.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Thank you.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Matt, you're muted, I think.
I apologize. Matt Errenworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Jill Pilla-Gallarani, Director of Labor Support Services.
Karen, if you want to introduce...
I'm the IT Consultant for the district.
I stand.
Carrie.
Carrie Purcell, Focus Schools.
Karen? Nope, we're not hearing you at all.
Karen Young, Nurse Leader.
Thank you. And then we have the principals and assistant principals at each of our schools. In your packet, you should have received warrants and minutes of the meeting from October 22nd. I will entertain a motion to approve that as a consent agenda A. Moved by Jack, seconded by Erin. Any discussion? All those in favor of consent agenda A? Aye, say aye. Hey, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Okay. At this point in our meeting, public forum. To my knowledge, we haven't had anyone asked to attend the meeting to speak to the public that is watching. If you know that you would like to speak to the school committee on a topic, and we're doing it as a Zoom meeting, you can get in touch with anyone on this call from the school committee or the superintendent, and we'll make sure that you have the link to connect and have the opportunity to speak to the school committee as a part of our public forum. We do live stream these meetings, and I know that the live stream provides an opportunity for question and answers, but we do not look through that process. Our technical director, Jesse, does, and sometimes will relay information, but this is not a question and answer meeting. It is a business meeting, and so if you would like to speak with the school committee, we certainly invite you to do so and welcome the public to share their thoughts and feelings. But we'd ask that you come into the Zoom meeting to do so, and we will arrange for that. So since nobody actually knew that today, Jesse, is there anything at all that we should be aware of at this point?
No, never, no, never, no.
Okay, thank you. Then I will turn this meeting over to the Superintendent, Dr. DeFalco.
Thanks, Ms. Reggio. Good evening, everybody. I first and foremost would like to welcome our visitors today. We have, as we heard with our introduction, some very, very special and important people here this evening. And each is going to take a few minutes to talk to the committee and the community about, quite frankly, the incredible work that is going on across our system in every department. As you had an opportunity to see on the agenda and in your packets, there is a significant amount of work going on in our school system. As we continue to navigate these tricky COVID waters that we all find ourselves swimming in, so to speak, we put all of this together this evening because we really wanted to take some time to talk about the work. And we wanted to take some time to show the school committee and to show our school community just how hard and just how much is going on, how hard everybody's working and how much is going on across our system. Everything from our technology, our hardware infrastructure, to all of our leadership development work at every single level, from our principals to our teachers, all of our school improvement plans and the work that's going on with curriculum, instruction, whereas what we also refer to as the what and the how, the whole child in our community. So while there certainly are other items on the agenda to discuss this evening, I do know that the bulk of it will be spent talking quite a bit about the work that we have been really forging ahead with as we've pushed through, quite frankly, the spring, the summer, and now into the fall. And so with that, I'm actually going to kick it over to Dan Saltzman, who is our technology consultant, our lead technology consultant. And he will be sharing with us this evening our technology plan that encompasses the work that will take place over the next three years. But I do want to say very quickly that I do meet with our tech team, Matt and I meet with our tech team once a month, and am always humbled by the work that is going on in that department. There was a lot of cleanup work to be done. There's a lot of infrastructure work to be done. And as everybody knows, because of the time in which we're operating, there's a lot going on with the teaching and learning technology, or sometimes we hear referred to as like instructional technology, but that teaching and learning technology. And these folks have been on the front line, our tech team has been on the front line, working with our teachers day after day, helping them reach our students who are not only learning in front of them, but the ones that are learning at home, whether it's part-time or full-time. And so just a really big debt of gratitude and appreciation to Dan and his entire team. It's a small team, but it is a mighty team. And so with that, Dan, I will turn this over to you.
Thanks, Jason. I appreciate it. I'm going to share my screen now. I think I can do that, right?
Good to be able to.
All right. You guys see the slideshow there?
Yes, we do.
Great. So first off, once again, I'm Dan Saltzman. I am the IT Consultant for the district. Thanks, Jason, for that introduction. We certainly have been working hard, and I appreciate being here tonight. You guys let me be here to kind of unveil our three-year technology plan that we've worked on for a while now. Feel free to interrupt with any questions. I know we have a packed night, so I'm just going to jump right in here. Overall, the theme here is to simplify and improve. That's what we need to do with all the technology systems at the district. So how are we going to do that? We're going to reduce the number of technology systems. We're going to reduce the complexity of those systems. We're going to improve the systems that we do retain. And the result there is going to be that we're going to simplify the management of all of these IT systems, and we're going to improve the reliability and the usability. And that last part is obviously the most important. So we have six areas of focus, and I'm going to go through those very quickly, and then we'll go into each one a little bit in depth. We've got our Microsoft Windows-based systems, the desktops and the servers. We have our Google-based systems. We have our network infrastructure, our clever-based single sign-on system that's new to the district. We have, of course, classroom technology and onboarding of new district employees and families. It's something that we've been working on recently. Let me go into a little bit of depth now about the Microsoft desktop systems. So we need to reduce in complexity and number, but also improve these systems. We have 560 desktop PCs, and really, for the most part, they're all older and slower, and they're running very old software. So we've got to reduce the number of those systems in favor of Google Chrome-based systems. Those Chrome systems are much easier to manage. They're much more reliable, and it's absolutely the way to go. We're going to upgrade any existing systems that we retain. We're going to make sure that they have the latest software on them, and we're going to make sure that they have the fastest hardware that can make them work well and improve the user experience and make it more efficient to manage them all. Now about the server systems. We currently manage 34 legacy servers. Those are housed in 14 hardware systems. The servers are really just, they're too varied, they're too inconsistent, and they have little or no redundancy. The age range of these legacy servers is from about 12 to five years old, and that means they're all unsupported, none of them have warranties. Now, some of the machines are running software that's so old, it was actually implemented or would have come out when our seniors were basically babies, right? So we've got some work to do there. Our workers cut out for us, and we've identified that. So our goal here is, again, reduce, replace, and upgrade. We're going to reduce the number of servers that we have. We don't need them all. We're going to increase server uptime and reliability through the simplicity and the redundancy that we're going to get in place. We're going to implement only one new server in each building, and we're going to use a fit-up, older server that will serve as redundancy for the new server. These are going to be consistent servers, running consistent software, new software, and they're going to be redundant. If one server goes down, there's going to be another server to pick up the work. Now on to the Google systems. BMR has embraced the G Suite for Education, as I think you all know. This is functionally equivalent to G Suite Enterprise, which is actually an expensive product, $25 per user per month. We have over 4,000 accounts, of which about 2,500 of them are active. So if you do the math, that's about a $700,000 system per year that we have access to, and we've taken advantage of that, and it's grown in use significantly. It's really the primary system that we use right now. So the Google system, when I talk about that, it encompasses three important areas. The Chromebooks, the devices that the kids use, and of course, we want to move some staff to them as well. We've got about 2,000 of those devices. Incredibly easy to maintain them, and that's the benefit there. The second system is the cloud-based G Suite applications, Google Docs, spreadsheets, presentations, Gmail, calendar. I think you're all familiar with that part of the system. The third part is probably what people are least familiar with, which is the backend, the Google Chrome Console. And that's 100% cloud-based, and it's just far easier to use than anything that Microsoft has put out in the last couple of decades. So what are the goals with these systems? Over the next three years, we want to migrate most, not all, but most teachers to higher-performing Chromebooks. It's less expensive than PCs, and it's far easier to manage them. We also need to audit our use of the Chrome Management Console, and that's going to improve the policies that run our systems, and it'll just make for better organization of our thousands of accounts and devices. Next topic is the network infrastructure, very important. All of our schools are interconnected and protected via a managed firewall service. All the schools employ similar networking technologies. We've got 222 access points, wireless access points, more than 40 Ethernet switches, and thousands and thousands of Ethernet jacks and cables. Ties everything together. So the goals for this all-important system, we have to consider first the impact of COVID-19 on our network. Nine months ago, you could have some sluggishness in certain areas that you just can't have now. So we need to figure out, do we need more speed in certain areas? Do we need more resources? We need to identify those bottlenecks, and we need to resolve them. Next, we have to upgrade, and we have to vigorously maintain our wireless and wired networks, and we'll be doing that regardless of what we find from our COVID-19 audits. We'll definitely be upgrading those systems in the next three years. The next system that I want to talk about is Clever Single Sign-On. This is brand-new to the district, first implemented in August, but as you can see here, we've got over 43,000 student logins to the system and 5,300 teacher logins. So we're using this system. Clever brings online learning resources together in one place, makes it much easier. There's just basically one login that everybody has. It gets them onto everything. It solves two really critical technology issues. The first, as I said, single sign-on, user authentication. Once a student logs into their Chromebook, they're logged into everything else that's connected to the Clever system. This is really, really important.
That's cool.
Yeah, they don't have to go into all these other systems and log in and remember passwords. It's all tied into Clever, and they only log in once. The second thing it does is it simplifies the distribution of the school data. So all of the online learning resources that we use require student data, teacher data, scheduling data. It all has to come from our X2 school information system. And before Clever, we had to push this data out individually after a setup, a laborious setup for each and every one. With Clever, the data is automatically pushed out, and it goes to every compatible system, and that ensures that the data is consistent across the platforms, and it really dramatically reduces the management. We only have to manage a couple of systems, not a dozen systems. So what are the goals for Clever? We need to audit this initial use of the system. It is brand-new, and we know that there's more efficiency we can squeeze out of it. We need to determine how people are using the system, and we need to optimize the data and the system. Next, we have the classroom technology. I think what I want to highlight most here is we have 160 aging projectors, and really, most all of these are in need of replacement. We do have a few that are new, but for the most part, they're all in various states of kind of old age. We also have 153 webcams for live streaming of classroom content. Those are mostly all new. And we have 45 document cameras for presentation of non-digital documents. We also have a host of other technology, microphones, speakers, things like that in most all of our classrooms. So the goals for the next three years in this area, we really need to develop a plan to replace all of our projectors. We need to analyze our use of all the other classroom technologies that we use. Are they effective? Do they enhance learning? That's important. And we need to develop a replacement schedule for all of them. The last topic I want to get into is our onboarding processes. So we currently use technology to onboard staff and students, but it's varied and it's inconsistent. When a new family comes into the district, when a new staff member comes into the district, we get the job done, we get these people up and running, but it's just not as efficient as it could be. Our current systems are being used effectively by people to do their work. There's no question about that. But we need to get it to the point where the data's moving around efficiently. Although work is getting done, downstream, we encounter problems. So we've identified a few issues. We need the collection and the movement of data from the point of entry to use is inefficient. The dissemination of this information, sometimes it's via email, sometimes it's even by paper. So we need to digitize that. We need to make that more efficient. If we don't do that, we have mistakes, we have oversights, and really, the data integrity is reduced. So the goals for the next three years, we're going to implement a formal process to streamline the collection and the dissemination of this data. We're going to leverage our existing systems, Google Docs, Google Forms, all of that. But we're also going to tie it together with a new cloud-based system so that everything is sort of one, under one umbrella, and we can sort of make sense of it all and push it around to different places and make sure that we're all on the same page. And that's pretty much it. We have, in the tech plan that I have, I believe you all have been given in your packet, we go into more detail about how this is going to get done and when it's going to get done. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But that is the plan that we plan to do over the next three years.
So when you, Dan, when you say projectors, is that like smartboard-type things too, or is that just...
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. Projectors, smartboards are like a step more functional than a projector. They're called interactive projectors, and we have a lot of those, no doubt. But in the end, it's about projecting content so that all the kids can see it from your computer.
And that'll be on like a replacement schedule?
Yes, exactly. And the cost of the hardware is significant, but the installation is really where it becomes a big deal. That can be expensive, and if we do it ourself, which we could, it would take a lot of effort. So there's a lot to that.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was going to ask the same question, projector versus smartboard. So I believe our middle school was the first building where we started using smartboards. Is that where you're seeing the age?
Yeah, we're really seeing it across the board. In addition to the fact that they're breaking down, they're also just spec-wise, they're just not good enough. The resolutions are really, really low, and that causes problems when you plug a computer into it and you're expecting a certain amount of resolution. If the projector can only give you a little bit, it's just not a good setup. But they are breaking down, and that's causing a lot of maintenance and overhead.
So what is the new product? What does it look like compared to what we have?
Well, it'll look the same, really. I mean, the technology itself hasn't changed fundamentally. It's still just projecting this content in a way that all the class can see it. It's just that the resolution's going to be higher, it's going to look a lot better, and it's going to work. Whereas right now, we just, we have a lot of them breaking down as they age. We replace tons of bulbs all the time, and we're constantly trying to repair the ones that we have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dan, I noticed in the information you sent to us that in FY '21, there's no Chromebook replacements. That doesn't really start till '22. Does that mean that kind of everybody's got one now?
So everybody does have one now, and we just ordered 500. And I'm not saying that we're not going to buy any next year.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, but I don't think it'll be quite as significant as what we did this year.
Right, or whole class or whatever, yeah, whole grade.
But we're going to get on a, I'd like to get us on a more predictable schedule, but at the same time, these Chromebooks are a little bit unpredictable. Some might last five years, and some might last three years. And so it's kind of hard to say, you know, we're going to replace them every three years or every four years.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, it has to be evaluated year by year.
Anyone else? Just so you know, when somebody's presenting, I can't see you.
Tammy has a question, Jane.
Go ahead.
Speaking in the third person. I just have one question in switching, you know, the thought of switching totally to Chromebook and the Google Suite products. In many, in my teaching experience, there are many things that you can't use the Chromebook for or download onto. And so what, how, what happens when all of our PC, and I'm sorry if I don't use the correct up-to-date terms, the PC, you know, desktop-type thing? So in my district, we're using a desktop and a Chromebook to livestream to our class. So if we don't have, I'm just concerned just going with Chromebooks for teachers.
Yeah, no, I absolutely know what you're talking about, and I appreciate the question. I actually, I was careful because I had a feeling this would come up. I'm careful to say, we're not going to replace all of the PCs, and we're not going to force every teacher onto a Chromebook. But the idea is that as many people as we can, as many as are practical, we want to move on to these systems. I think that in the beginning, with Chromebooks a few years ago, there were absolutely a lot of things that could not be done, and there still are things that can't be done in a Chromebook. But for the most part, for most teachers, the Chromebooks that we can get, and we're not talking about a student Chromebook. This will be a Chromebook that has a bigger screen, that has a better processor, more memory, more storage. Those types of Chromebooks are usable by most teachers. And again, it's not something that we're going to push on people overnight. I think anybody that wants it, we'd be happy to give them one. Every Chromebook that replaces a PC is going to make the infrastructure of the district work that much better. It's just easier to maintain these systems. So I don't know if that answers your question. The bottom line is, we're not going to push it on everybody, and I think the technology has improved to the point where it can be done.
Thanks. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Dan, thanks so much. We very much appreciate, again, all of your work and the work of our technology department.
Thanks, Jason.
Excited to see these goals put in place. And speaking of goals and expectations, we're going to shift gears and very excited to, in a moment, hand this over to Carrie Purcell, who is joining us again. We are in year three of our Focus School Expectations, really delving deeply into our seven areas of focus across the school system. And Carrie, in a moment, is going to talk a bit about the work that she has done and continues to do across our system. And I think it's really important to note that in a few minutes, when we hear from our principals, you will hear some very common themes from Carrie's messaging and focal points of her work to the work that is very evident in all of our school improvement plans at each level. So Carrie, like I had shared about Dan and the work that his team is doing, you are a team of one, and we're super happy that you've stayed the journey with us, you've stayed the course, and we're eager to hear a bit about the work you have done and you are doing and you'll continue to do with our system.
Great. Thanks so much, Jason, for having me, and thanks to my friends on the school committee. I feel like I'm back seeing my school committee family. Before I start sharing my presentation, I just wanted to remind you, I think it was the all-purpose room or the library at the high school where I first met you, and one of the things I said right away to you is, my job is to work myself out of a job. So every time I'm here, working with your amazing leaders, from the superintendent to the classroom teacher, to the amazing principals and assistant principals who will speak in a minute, my job really is to work myself out of a job. And this year, I can see the sun beginning to set. Now, is there work still to do? Absolutely. But we have made that turn to a place where the focus framework is now the way Blackstone Millville does business. So I usually take way too much time talking and sharing and celebrating your fearless leaders, and tonight, I'm going to try to keep that a little bit shorter with the intent of opening up the platform to the real heroes in this work, and that is your school principals and your school assistant principals, who truly, I'm working on seven different projects in the state of Massachusetts alone, and I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt, you have true heroes that come to work every day in service of your kids. And what they are doing is above and beyond the call of duty, because as Jason said, they're swimming in these uncharted waters, and they're swimming upstream, and they're not drowning. So I just want to thank them ahead of this little presentation for all the work that they're doing. So, and thank you for supporting them and that work. So as Jason said, tonight, we're going to just talk a little bit about year three, what that looks like, what that sounds like, and where we're at right now. So really, I have one outcome this year, and that outcome is not to introduce anything new, but rather to deepen the work that we're doing, both at the district and the school level, to make sure beyond a shadow of a doubt that we are meeting the needs of every single student every day. And we actually started this work over the summer, so a little bit early, and we spent some time as leadership teams this summer really thinking about the vision. Why do we drive into the parking lot every day? What is our job? What is our mission? And we all came to the understanding of it's our, each of our responsibilities to make sure that the student holding the diploma, at the end of this journey, is equipped with the skills that he or she needs to be successful citizens, employees, employers, parents, whatever the case might be. We are all equipping them with the skills and tools that they need. And so the visual at the bottom of that screen just shows an example of some of that thinking that we did over the summer that leads to our expectations this year. So again, our framework is the same. We have seven areas. We've been working on those, working on those, working on those. We're not introducing one single new thing. We're just going deeper. So I'm going to highlight for you some of the ways that we're doing that. So for three years, we've been thinking about this idea of a school-wide instructional focus. 100% of our schools now have that focus, and they are fully implementing that. That means that you can talk to students, and they can tell you what the focus is and why we have it. You can talk to staff members, you can talk to family members, and so on and so forth, because the school-wide instructional focus serves as the foundation for improvement. The second area we're really going deep in is thinking about when adults sit at the table, what do we do? And what we have committed to doing this year is really thinking about, well, what does the data say is working? How are we celebrating those accomplishments? How are we identifying needs and responding accordingly? So in a minute, I'm going to show you an example of how we're doing that. The next big area that we're thinking about this year and really deepening our craft and our understanding of... The next big area that we're thinking about this year and really deepening our craft and our understanding of this is tools. So how are we giving students the tools? We call them in fancy words, evidence-based practices, but really they're tools to help our students be successful in grappling with and being proficient in daily instruction. This one, I would like to stand up and clap and do cheers and all of those things, but it would probably be inappropriate. So I will just tell you why I'm so happy about this next one.
If we were in person, you would definitely stand up and cheer.
I would, I would do this and I would do this, yes. So, but for now, what I will say is when you see and hear from your principals about their school improvement plans, you will notice that all of their PD, all of the professional development they're giving their teachers directly aligns to that school improvement plan. Why is that so important? Because not only are we equipping students, but we're also equipping staff. Principals are now becoming very um, skilled in looking at the resources that they have and responding accordingly to identify needs. And probably and hopefully what you're noticing is community members and family of parents is that we're working really hard or they're working really hard. I'm just here to cheer them on to empower you, to empower families and community to be a part of this work. So as you can see, if you were here in um, the high school a few years back, I was talking about what I was going to do for the schools and now I'm describing for you what they're doing because they're doing amazing leadership things. So I wanted to give you a couple of examples of impact. So what does all this look like? So this looks like a fancy graph and it is, it's kind of pretty. But really what it means is that our elementary schools, both Millville and Blackstone, are collaborating together along with their coach, their PTL, to really use this cycle of improvement at every PLC meeting, at staff meetings, at PD meetings, to look at data and to respond accordingly. So it's like going to the doctor and standing on the scale, just standing on the scale and having the nurse say you're five pounds overweight is not going to make me lose weight. By looking at data and just saying, oh, well, there's the data, nothing will happen. So this cycle allows teachers to say, well, what is the data saying? Why do we think that's happening? And what are we going to do about that? So I'm super excited and I and I think um, perhaps Christina and Jenny will allude to this a little bit, the commitment of the teachers to do this, because this is really hard work. Impact at the secondary schools is equally as exciting. Um, as I said, I work in a lot of places, both in Massachusetts and across the country. And one of the things that typically happens is when you leave the brick and mortar building, you leave behind all of the things that brick and mortar building taught you. So in other words, when you go from middle school to high school, it's clean the slate and start over. Tanya and Mike have skillfully and deliberately aligned their work so that what Tanya is do is doing with her staff is a building block to what's happening in high school. So we're setting the students up for success by adding to their toolbox, all pointing in that one direction of making sure one hundred percent of our students graduate ready for life. And they're doing that by skillfully looking at those evidence-based practices, by aligning their PD and by working closely with Jeff alongside Jeff, the coach, to think about how do we continue to support teachers in a strategic manner? I could go on and on and on and on some more about the impact, but I'm not the real storyteller here. The real storyteller is the the principals and so I'm going to save that for them to elaborate on a little bit. And I want to show you one more um, piece of information again, that if I were there, I would be doing this and this and all of those things. Because I have been working with the principals alongside of them in an unprecedented time, as we all know. Nobody has ever dealt with COVID nineteen. Nobody has never dealt with this global pandemic, shutting down schools, opening schools, hybrid and so on and so forth. So many principals across the country are saying, I am the COVID principal. I'm going to work on making sure that the systems and structures are ready for that. Yes, your principals are doing that, but they're going far and beyond that and thinking about this idea of building capacity in their teachers. Just like me, they're trying to work themselves out of a job. And this um, I think it's called a barometer, I don't know. It looks like something in your car when you're going too fast, the police will pull you over. But that's not what this is about. If you see this arrow right here, it goes off of the chart. If you see where the blue line starts, somebody much smarter than me and Dr. John Hattie, who studied thousands and thousands of schools across the world, says, if what you're doing lands right here on this blue line, you're predicted to get a year's growth. So if you look at where this arrow is at, you get a speeding ticket if you were in an automobile, but look at the impact you're going to have when you work to build collective teacher efficacy. And that simply means teachers who are willing to talk about their practice as a way to impact teaching and learning. And we are doing that and committed to that, again, not we, sorry. They are doing that and committing to that by spending fifty percent of their time in classroom giving growth-producing feedback. In other words, feedback that helps their teachers work smarter, not harder, for the students that they serve. So that is um, in just a few minutes, I'm, you know, usually I go twenty-five minutes. So I don't know, I feel kind of good. It took me how long to tell that story? Anyway, though, I really want to open up this up for a few questions, if you have any. And then I want to be quiet and let the real stars of the show um, share their stories with you. But I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Carrie?
Well, as somebody who has sat through the the three years thus far, um, I'll be the first to say I hope it continues. Um, and I hope you haven't worked your way out of a job just yet.
No, not just yet, but I'm getting there, right?
But I I do see a difference. I absolutely do see the impact of the work that's being done. Um, and I think if our families really took a good look at where we were three or four years ago and where we are now as a district, as as individual schools, uh, I think they would see a difference.
Oh, that's so good to hear. That's so good to hear. My job is to serve you and to serve children and it's it's been an honor and it will continue to be an honor and not going anywhere anytime soon.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you for all of the effort.
Thanks so much, Carrie.
You are welcome.
Um, so with that, we're gonna segue right into our school improvement plans and we're gonna start with elementary. And one of the things I think that's really important for our community to uh, to be aware of is that this year, for the first time, uh, we actually have one instructional leadership team at the elementary level. It's comprised of teachers and staff from both schools that meet routinely. Um, and they decided, uh, because so much of the work is done together, that they are actually, they actually wrote one school improvement plan uh, that encompasses both buildings. Because the partnership uh, between both schools is so tight and the work is so focused uh, on the same areas, um, that they decided to tackle this work from a very similar place. And I and I do want to just reference, um, again, uh, to our committee in our community. You are seeing the common language, you're seeing the common focus areas and everything anchors back to our district improvement improvement. So that alignment and that consistency. Jane, I think I I actually really appreciate what you said about you would see the work coming through in in individual schools, but also across the district. Uh, and I hope that folks see that, see. So with that, uh, Dr. Remka, Ms. Schaper?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You're muted, Jenny.
Sorry. In front of you, we have a PowerPoint to present our school improvement plan. Um, you know, like Carrie say, Carrie always say she's O. And I can say I am O as well, so I've been around for a while. Been around the block, like the teachers, my teachers would say Jenny on the block. I work with many organizations and I work for many superintendent. I'm not looking for a pay raise. But I have to say, um, working in Blackstone with Carrie and Jason and all the principals and the directors, it has been uh, eye-opening for me um, as a professional. This school improvement last year was like, oh my God, giving me a huge assignment. And all right, I'm gonna just put in the information Dr. Tavago wants and we're done with it. But after last year and looking at this year's plan, it's really personal and professional. Uh, looking at it, um, I don't need to look at, Christina and I both don't need look, need to look at the plan and be able to talk about it. I think that's important. So um, there were a lot of reflection prior to writing the school improvement plan. Our IOT teams, both schools, we say team now, and principals and Carrie work on um, the reflection and using the focus framework. And that really like lay the groundwork for our school improvement plan. So um, the first part we want to talk about is
Jenny, I just want to add one more thing. So in addition to working with our IOTs, we actually brought um, our school improvement plan to our staff, both staffs. Um, we we asked at the PD day that they take a look at it. You know, we shared it the day before, so they had some time to preview it. Um, we offered them the opportunity to provide us any feedback. We gave them a whole nother day. Um, we haven't heard anything other than it's, you know, it's what they're doing now. So it's not a surprise. Oftentimes, previously, our school improvement plans just, you know, Jason said it too, um, sit on a shelf and you don't really know what they were until the next year and you check them. But we're actually living this document. So um, the staff, I think, saw the the transition into what we did for this, from last year's to this year's. Um, and we're also going to be bringing the document forward to our school councils um, once we're all set with the presentations and the approvals.
Okay, thanks, Christina. So the first part is the what and the instructional materials that we have in this district, which I'm very thankful for um, for our elementary school teachers. Um, the goal one is our new um, ELA program, um, curriculum, curric- curriculum program for our K to five students. You know, it's easy to buy a program and give it to the teachers and say, go one with it. But we didn't do that. We make sure our teachers are equipped to t- use the program. So they participated in PD back in May, that was our very first PD. And the second PD was in September and more recent, most recently, our October PD. And on top, uh, in addition to the PD, um, our coach are very intentionally going into the classroom and um, working with teachers on their focus areas based on the programs. Uh, the second goal is our math and uh, curriculum program, which, you know, ha- we have implemented that program for a few years now. But we both say last year was the really first year that we are really streamlined through every single grade, using the same version of uh, the program and using the program with fidelity. So we want to continue doing that because we want to make sure we have accurate data and um, teacher has have another years to work with the program. And at the end of the year, we we evaluate this program and make sure uh, the program is effective, teaching every student in every classroom. Christina, you wanna?
I think I'm good with that one. Does anyone have any questions for that goal?
I do want to add one piece is because we want to make sure we implemented these two programs with fidelity. How do we do that? Well, make sure we see the evidence in every classroom. And the way to do that is that spending at least fifty percent of the time in the classroom and giving teachers feedback on the instruction using the programs.
All right, so the how. Um, so our first goal for the how is just continuing to use instructional supports and implementing new ones um, to help our staff just continuing to grow and strengthen their craft. Um, and no matter what role they have, continuing to grow our teachers, our power professionals, everyone in our building. Um, some things that we've done this year, um, or we have done already, is we have our instructional focuses in place. We've identified at least one instructional strategy that we're using. Um, so our plan is by mid-year, we will have our second, in full effect, our second strategy. Um, we are also working on data cycles. So during the first ten days of PD, our instructional leadership team was actually trained with Carrie um, on what data cycles were and the data cycle protocol. And then in turn, our instructional leadership team trained our staff in the data cycle protocol. So we were actually able to practice um, with three different pieces of fake data. So it wasn't personal to any staff. So we did some like, and staff could choose. So they had three or four p- options. So some were like sporting ones, some were health ones. There were some school ones in there, so it was nothing related to us, so that way no one would take it personal and they would actually be able to just practice the protocol. And so we did that for two times. Um, and the staff really enjoyed that time together and they, one piece that I found very interesting was they enjoyed not just being grade level, they enjoyed being um, basically everybody. So our PE teachers, our art teachers, everyone, we had mixed, super mixed groups. And they enjoyed the feedback because typically when you're in a specific grade and you've been there for a long period of time, you're very set on what it should look like. But those people from the outside are able to provide something, a new, you know, um, perspective as to what might not be working. So it's been very beneficial. Um, and that diagram that Carrie showed in her presentation is what we used with our staff. They all had copies of that and they had it um, laid down in the steps. So that was great to use with them. Um, and then we're growing by the end of the year, we're going to use multiple sources of data and continuing to just use that ongoing um, cycles of improvement and kind of just looking to see areas of strength, areas that, you know, we can improve in and just continuing to help build our schools um, and the students' learning. And then for goal two, and we're just gonna continue working with focus schools, strengthen our instructional leadership teams um, and just continue to produce, you know, and help our staff grow into high-quality teaching and learning in every classroom with no exceptions. So things that we've already done this year, again, the data cycle training, these are very similar. Um, and all staff, every staff member, power professional, specialist, uh, occupational therapist, the service providers, they all were part of this training. So it was great to have um, everyone understand because everyone has data. It may look differently, but everyone has data, so they can all still use this protocol. Um, so then we're going to continue meeting regularly, you know, working on those instructional strategies. And we're gonna continue looking at student work. And then the last, by the end of the year, we will um, you know, look and take a survey, use that survey and use that data to um, help our, plan our modifications or anything that we need to do improvements for the following school year. So we're gonna use it, we're gonna use it and make it productive for the following school year to help fill in those gaps that we may have um, from COVID as well as, you know, starting the year a little bit behind due to the COVID um, you know, closures last year. Jenny, anything else for that one?
No, you did a great job.
Anyone else have any questions?
Okay, so the next part is the whole child. After 2020, I think we all agree that SEL is so important. Not just for our kids, it's also for our teachers. So if that is true, then it is, you know, in order to implement a successful social emo- emotional program, we need to invest the most precious resource, time. It is not another thing added to the teachers, not another thing added to the principal, but looking at it is a very important um, step to take. Um, so we invest time, so we need tools. So the goal one is our social emotional program, our choose love program. We continue um, using that program i- on a daily basis. The second one is school i- our school i- activities. We want to impl- we want to um, incorporate mindfulness teaching uh, in order to help our teachers and also our students on self-awareness, empathy, self-advocacy and self-care. Um, in the summer, our uh, school adjustment counselors actually held a book club. And it was pretty good turnout and they read, I don't remember what book they read because I wasn't part of that book club. Do you remember, Christina?
Uh, Jill, Jill, Jill might be able to answer and help us with that one. Fostering resilient learners, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, but it was well received, um, um, uh, the staff was, you know, uh, who participated very happy with it. And so we'll continue working, you know, you know, continue with the program, Choose Love and also mindfulness teaching. Do you want to add anything?
Sure. So one great thing that um the S E L district team did for all of the staff at the, the first ten days is. They did a mindfulness training and they also provided different activities. Um, our adjustment counselors share um different activities for staff, so Linda shared something um about. Um, about mindfulness and just having that time and so I made sure I shared that in the newsletter. She, she shared it with staff, but I also shared it again, just in case they missed it in their emails. Um, and we're also announcing with the Choose Love that comes with a calendar of activities, so those are getting announced. On the intercom every day, so that the kids are constantly hearing that vocabulary from the four pillars of the program. Alright, so the community, um, this is a huge part. We just basically, our goal is to keep the families and the community engaged in helping our students grow as learners. So by doing this, we've held um some community forums about the reopening of school. Um, when we decided to shift from the model that we had for fourth and fifth grade, we had a parent night. Um, and we, you know, shared the information with parents. We also sent it out in an email, just in case parents couldn't attend. Um, we're, we're regularly updating parents about changes um that we're doing or things that we're noticing and then we make a change. Um, based on, you know, what we were observing. Um, we held meet the teacher a little differently this year. We actually held it within the first ten days of school. So that the students could get a sense of their new classroom, since they couldn't come in to see it, they did a virtual meet the teacher. Um, and that was well attended. Um, this year, we're also planning to continue those collaborative relationships between school and home. And helping families, um, and this kind of goes into the second goal. Be mindful, be aware of what's going on in the classroom. Um, be aware of the grades that their students are getting, the feedback that the teachers are giving, where to find that feedback. Um, and um we will be using, you know, the surveys and data to, you know, adjust what we're doing to help that. Uh, families will be equipped with tools and we may need to differentiate, so maybe a family has um a larger, stronger strength with. You know, the, the digital platforms and maybe some families need some more support with that. So continuing to provide them the varied support and the differentiated support that they need for their family to be successful and their child to be successful. Um, and we'll just continue using the data to plan implementations at the end of the year for the following year, so we're ready to go. Um, and then for goal two, just engaging their families in the transition between learning models. Um, we know at some point, there's, there's going to be shifts. Um, we had a shift happen this week, so we had, we have been practicing with the students how to use their Chromebooks, how to, especially our youngest learners. How to log in, we um had a teacher do a practice Google me, uh, sorry, Zoom meeting for homework one night. So the kids all brought their um Chromebooks home and at four thirty, they had a Google Meet and that was their homework for the night. So they logged in at four thirty with the teacher. Um, then this way, it allowed for the teacher to see if there were any issues prior to, God forbid, we have to go remote. Um, they have that opportunity to talk to families, the parents are able to tell them what the kids had trouble with, the kids were able to tell the teacher what they had trouble with. Um, and um even this, this week, we had our kindergarten class, we had a kindergarten class transition to remote. And they are moving away, they're, they're sending me pictures of what they're doing and they're able to log in. It's a little challenging because the spelling of things is a little more difficult in kindergarten. But they're able to log in and our coaches helped us come up with a way. We had their username and password on the cover of their Chromebooks, but we actually put it on their, near their keyboards. So it's just now learning where the letters are on the keyboard. Um, so that part, being able to transition seamlessly through all the, the learning plans that were developed at the beginning of the year is super important for us. Um, and if we need to shift, staff and um families will be ready. And we recently, this week, um, have staff, you know, have a, we'll call it a pack up list at the elementary level. That if we need to pack up, you know, just in case we have to go remote as a district or as a single class or multiple classes. We have that list ready to go, so if it has to happen, you've got your list of what you need. You don't need to panic, you know what your kids need to pack up in their backpacks. So we're kind of working on different things to kind of help us with that seamless transition between the different learning models um throughout the year.
Thank you. I will say one thing COVID brought. Um, it's something magical, COVID, I'm not crazy. Um, is bringing our community closer together. Um, we're talking to parents more, um, we are all become more vulnerable. Um, parents come to, I don't know what to do, can you help me? We're constantly talking to parents, we're meeting with large group of parents. I, you know, personally feel so much closer to the parents. I know them, I know what car they drive. So I think this whole pandemic really brought our community together. I, any questions?
Um, Christina and Jenny, I just had, this is Tammy, I have one question. Um, and something I asked um Jason about earlier. Historically, when I, when I was participating in the elementary school and middle and high. Um, these school improvement plans were created by the academic, um, I'm sorry, the uh school council. Do either of your schools have school councils actively going right now through the pandemic?
So before, so for Millville, um, we were up until the pandemic, we have our team. And the team should all be back this year, we have not met this year. Yeah.
Okay.
Same with Blackstone.
And so are parents on that team?
Yes.
Okay. But did, they did not participate in the creation of this document?
No, this was our instructional leadership team.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So professional development, as Carrie said, you know, when we create the school improvement plan. Um, we look at the focus school framework, reflex, there's some reflection. And um, so we created the plan and to support the plan, we have a professional, a targeted professional development. Um, Christina, you wanna, go ahead.
Absolutely. So we, we'll have a variety of um professional development going on. Um, we have some site-based, in this case this year, it's more going to be um virtual. But um different things that are needed, so um, you know, the wonders, um, stuff like that. We also have in the last two pages of our plan, um, just different pieces throughout the year that our I L Ts will be doing. Our P L Cs will be doing, so professional learning communities. Um, continuing to just collaborate with, to look at the assessments and the data cycles and all that. And then the I L T is going to be the implementation of the school improvement plan and just continuing to monitor that throughout the year. And kind of make adjustments as needed to our moving forward.
Any questions? In conclusion, I want to tell, I want to tell Tanya and uh Mike. Without our little guys kindergarten graduation, it wouldn't be high school graduation. Oh, you're welcome. Anything, any questions?
Anybody have any questions? For Jenny or Christina?
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I hope, you know, I, I hope folks are able to see the direct connection alignment across the buildings, across and throughout the grades. Um, and what we're going to hear uh a little bit about next is uh from our secondary school principals, Tanya and Mike. And I know Jan and Keith are with us too, our assistant principals. So I hope uh the four of our uh team members will weigh in here, but um one of the things, and I think Carrie mentioned this earlier. That's super exciting for us is to see these kind of stepping stones uh across the grade levels. While being to, um, of course, um, making sure that kids are ready for uh college career and community, right? Or whatever's next for them when they leave us uh as twelfth graders. Um, and so with that, we have separate school improvement plans for our middle and high school. Uh, but because there's so much connection, there's so many, um, uh, so many through lines. Uh, we're going to hear one secondary school um presentation this evening. So Tanya and Jan and Mike and Keith, take it away.
Can people see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Somehow I shared the screen and my mute, my mic got muted and my camera was turned off. Mr. Dudek, are you there? Cause I can't see anyone.
You're muted, Mike. You're still muted, Mike.
Alright, my apologies, um, been a long day. Um, so as I was um trying to say, I think um Christina and Jenny already presented, their presentation was essentially ours, so I think we're all set, we're all good. Right, so uh what I wanted to start off with was just to thank um the I L T and the various members um of our um, our school community. Uh, that came together to write our SIP plan. Um, you know, all faculty had, similarly to the elementary school, all, all faculty had input on the document. We provided some time and opportunities uh during the P D day, which was super useful for us. Um, and um after tonight, um, we will be sharing uh our, the official SIP plan with our students, uh, community members, parents. As well as our school councils as well. So similarly to the elementary school, we're, we're following along. Uh, but to uh Tammy's question earlier, um, the school council was not, um, had the SIP plan shared with them previous. But we would love to be able to share this uh once we have a formal plan in place. Um, so our first slide that we wanted to um highlight was just to really celebrate. Uh, the good work that we've done to accomplish, uh, or that we accomplished for last year. Um, last year was, you know, a crazy year, we ended the year in March. Um, but we were still able to um really get a lot done. Um, so we wanted just to highlight a few of those pieces and you'll see that there's some similarities. Um, at the elementary uh school as well, so I'll let Tanya just begin with Frederick Carton at Middle School accomplishments.
Are you making sure I'm awake, Mike, by changing it up and making me go first?
Yes, I'm, yes, yes.
Alright, um, so at the middle school, I definitely wanted to highlight all the accomplishes, accomplishments we made last year. You know, while we may not have been in the building in March, the teachers were still. Uh, really working hard to make sure that our ACE was implemented in the assignments that were being given out in the spring. And what you see here is a lot of work in the short amount of time that we had in person last year. Uh, we had identified and came up with a school-wide instructional focus of critical thinking. And then from that, we had student involvement, we had students come up with like our student-friendly slogan, we had competitions. For voting, we also had competition for our logo design, uh, which actually was from Haley, who's now an eighth grader. And not only has this become her design and a logo that we are sharing out any way we can this year. But uh even the teachers every Friday have bought shirts that now have been um an embroidered logo as well. So it's been really cool to see a design that one of our students created really become what our school is this year. Um, so the first thing that we were working on for the teacher evidence-based practice was ACE. We looked at this, since it was something the school had done before, it kind of dissipated. It was a little different in that A S E was from all departments. Um, A S E was actually more for math, we were using A C E. And so as a school, we were like, we need to pick one acronym, one thing that everyone as a school is working on, which is answer, support and explain. Um, and we realigned our resources to support, support this instructional focus. Uh, we came up with a smarty goal that we now have posted in our main office, that about all students. Uh, becoming problem solvers and that we're looking at the data through our STAR three times a year and the MCAST data, once we start to have that again. Um, and then our student, we have also, last year, we aligned, the teachers actually aligned all of their student learning goals to the making use of this A S E. Um, which was really fantastic that everyone together as departments, as teams, were working on. How our students were growing in the use of A S E. And uh so then up next is Mike about the high school accomplishments.
Great, so uh again, we have pretty similar accomplishments that we have, but uh so our school-wide instructional focus was fully identified and embedded. Uh, aligned with critical thinking and problem solving, um, our student-friendly focus statement is charged through challenges. Um, we were able to um formally have uh P L Cs and, and collaborative teams uh within our departments. To uh, to work with, um, looking at student work to improve teaching and learning for all students. Um, middle school had their focus on ACE for the first half of last year. Uh, our focus was on annotation and interacting with the source, uh, so that's something that we are still continuing to do. We feel like it's, it's a really important uh piece and element that um can um engage all students, all learners, all courses. But we will be going into ACE um as our second. Alright, uh, in terms of our, in terms of our second instructional practice. Uh, the other piece of just realigning our resources, so when we look at our P D. Um, in, in the SIP plan, you'll see that there are elements of our authentic assessments and portfolio assessments in there. Um, our smarty goal is very similar to elementary, uh, to the middle school. Um, where we are looking for all students to uh grow in their ability to think critically uh through problem solving. Um, and um finally, uh, in, in terms of the smarty goal as well. Uh, we, we will be looking at our MCAST, our STAR. Uh, we did just um implement and design a new rubric, school-wide rubric for critical thinking. Um, so I'm really excited about that, it took some work um to, to be able to build and define um what critical thinking. Uh, looks like in each of our classrooms. And then our developed uh, our P D plan uh to support our instructional focus, which was uh started last year, but uh is continuing on for this year. So those are some of the accomplishments.
Um, so some of the, so as we were actually creating this presentation, looking at last year's um presentation. We had had a couple of slides about what we had in common at the high school and middle school. And then what our differences were in our school improvement plan. And Mike and I just kind of looked at each other and we're like, uh, we don't have a need for those differences anymore on the um slides. So you're actually going to see that as a huge difference for tonight's presentation. Um, so we're just going to talk about what we have in common for each of the buckets, because there really is very little differences going on. So for the what, um, we have the implementation as well of the literacy program. I can't thank everyone even K through twelve, because I was helping uh lead the literacy adoption pro, last year. And all the work we did up until even when we were virtual, teachers were on the P D. Learning about the new programs that we were going to start in the fall. Um, so I, I greatly appreciate everyone's work and effort with that and uh the work through A NET really helped us to hone in exactly. To make sure we chose very rigorous um programs, but ones that are absolutely going to show us um student growth by the end. So we're using Amplify at the middle school and the high school's using Study Sync. While it's two different programs, there's a great similarity in that it's very tech-based. Um, but there is consumables and textbooks that, that we can use if needed. Um, there are also this year, what we're going to be doing at the K to twelve as well is the math curriculum programming. Um, for the middle school, we have big ideas, so it's going to be more of reviewing, how is this program working? Um, is there any gaps? What are we using, what are we using to supplement with the program? And then the high school will be looking the same way, but also looking to see if there's going to be any adoption of a, of a, of a program for the high school level.
And then looking at the two um additional bullets, um, the middle school and high school uh did receive some significant grants last year. Um, to look at um elements of career exploration and then building um on that. Um, at the high school to have some pathways. and then building on that at the high school to have some pathways. So the ACE career exploration has been a big part of the middle school. And when we talk about bridging gaps and opportunities, this to me, I think is a great connection for students to be able to explore that at the, at the middle school level, but then also engage in formal pathways. So at the high school right now, we started our first course in the biomedical science pathway. That's been going really well. Got some great feedback from students and parents. You know, the original design wasn't for it to be online or remote, but there has been plenty of resources on that. And it's just phenomenal to see how students are still engaged in labs and then being able to articulate and model that with our full remote learners. The other piece to that with the high school pathways, we're going to extend on that. And we are looking for, or seeking another grant in the possible area of engineering, manufacturing. So that's their career explorations and pathways. And then developing strengthening remote learning plans, that is a goal for the districts. All teachers and staff members have that as a professional practice goal to focus and strengthen remote learning so that it is streamlined. If we do in fact go in any direction in terms of a learning plan, a lot of our PD in the beginning of the school year, as well as throughout the year, will continue on looking at remote learning plans so that we are fully supporting students in whatever platform or learning environment that will be in. So that is the what's.
I just want, and just to follow up on the career exploration. So at the middle school with the ASA career exploration grant we received, we're working with the STEM technology class to ensure that that field slides seamlessly into the high school's robotics program. So when the students are getting there, they're building on what they've learned here at the middle school. And that it's not starting from the very beginning of the robotics. And with STEM, we're increasing also more technology pieces in our STEM classes. And then we're really excited that we're going to, we're slowly having through the use of Mrs. Riley in our guidance program, as well as some of the rotation teachers, to have students explore different careers. That also will lead into the possible pathways that are at the high school with biomedical and the engineering. And we're even like this, this quarter, we had students that were with the art teacher and Mrs. Riley talking about different career explorations within the art field. Not just a painting, but graphic novels, you know, video game programming. So that's been one really huge excitement that we've had this year. So for the how, as we had already said, the full, full implementation of our instructional focus, which is problem-solving, critical thinking at both of our schools. We're deepening that implementation at the high school with the authentic assessments. And we're building upon that so that students are getting, learning about authentic assessments, project-based learning through new units that we're working on with New England Base Camp with our science and history courses. And then that's going into the district's vision of the portrait of the graduate that I'll let Mike speak about, speak about.
Sure. So again, I'm extremely excited about this alignment with the authentic assessment portfolio piece and then the project-based assessments that are happening at the middle school. So both of us are teamed up with New England Base Camp to work with our, our teachers on building high-quality authentic, high-quality assessments where students are able to showcase their learning in, in various ways. And I think when we, when we're in this remote hybrid online world right now, I think the projects that students are able to provide or be assessed on are just, it's a, it's a nice seamless transition when teachers are looking to get some feedback or give feedback to, to students to see how they're doing when they're at home and may not be able to take a typical exam with a computer in front of them and, you know, Googling answers per se. So at the high school with the authentic assessments, we were able to build our critical thinking rubric. We're using our PD day. We have varied, I believe there's 10 workshop hours that faculty can sign up for to be able to bring in some of their, their student work and then align their projects or, or assessments to the critical thinking rubric, but also to aligning it to the competencies for the portrait of the graduate. As you know, we presented the portrait of the graduate in the competencies last year in May, and we are continuing to move forward with that. And for this year, we are looking for high school specifically to be able to reflect on their work and their learning experiences to each of the competencies and just in some simple language diagrams that we have that we'll be presenting to the community closer to the mid-year of semester one, which is about two weeks.
So the other part that you'll see with the instructional focus is our evidence-based teaching strategy. So we started with ACE and the high school started with annotation. And the high school and middle school are just going to flop, flip-flop. So the second one that we will be working on is annotation. And the high school is going to be working on ACE. So this way, students will continue and there won't be any new onboarding of, oh, here's our practices that we're doing at the high school. They will already know them and be able to go deeper and, and from where we took the students in, in middle school.
So as, as Tanya and I speak, you know, we joke, but I, but I, I think that we are experts in, in those instructional practices at the high school. So, you know, we will team up with middle school to share out what annotation looks like. And middle school will do the same with the high school with ACE. So we're looking forward to that. The last piece of the how is just when we think about our PLC or times for teachers to be able to collaborate. They're using that time purposely. It's focused. And we're, we're looking at specific protocols to be able to, to leverage what we're doing and using that to, you know, tweak teaching and learning per se. So a lot of what we'll be doing, and it's, it's in the SIP plan, is that we're going to leverage the work of our coaches, our teaching and learning coaches to really help facilitate and guide teachers in some collaborative practices to really just review student work and think about, you know, what are the, the next steps in improving and supporting all learners in all of our buildings? It's me, Tanya, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So the whole child, you'll see the Choose Love program is there. It's embedded into what we were, what we were doing last year. And we are continuing on to look at those competencies of courage, gratitude, forgiveness, and compassionate action. As Jenny mentioned earlier, the need for social emotional learning and just mindfulness exercises for staff, students in the community is vital and really important. So we are looking to deepen that implementation there. And then also looking at social emotional supports. Elementary mentions some of the good work that our adjustment councils were doing. There is a resources, a resource that they created called Chargers Comm. That's focused in on staff, students, and families. I've shared that out with, with the community as well. And I'm hoping that they're utilizing some of that at home in terms of just trying to find some emotional supports when they are at home. I'll also add, I know looking at our PD, the 10 days that we had earlier on in the year, we did model a lot of, or model to our staff, a lot of the practices that Choose Love provides for us. And then thinking about mindful, you know, moments to be able to sort of ground all of us and thinking about what's, what's most important. And that's, that's health and safety, you know, for, for all of our folks. So that is the whole child.
So for the community, I think especially for the, for the middle school, my, my ILT was gung-ho this summer in way, getting ways to share out to make sure everyone knew about Chargers Comm Fully Charged. We kept talking about it last year, but I think now you would definitely say, wow, that's, that's all over the place here now at the middle school. And we looked for a lot of ways where we could show, showcase it that wasn't even at a cost. And the same thing up at the high school. So for example, if you get an email from myself or from Mr. Dudek or any teacher at, or any staff member really at our level, at each of our school, you'll see in our email signatures is the logos, because we had spent just a couple of minutes to help all the staff to be able to add those logos into their emails. We also had a new photographer this year where we got free IDs. So with those IDs, we can also have the logo put onto that. So that's just a couple of ways that we are using that to educate and communicate to our families. We're also working on one pager for ACE. So the one pagers that we'll be sharing out is just really, what are the teachers doing to help teach ACE? What should the students be able to do? And how could you, as your families and communities, get students to start thinking about ACE or annotation and to help them using it? We want to start, you know, living that first evidence-based practice of answer, support, and explain. And it doesn't always have to be something written. If you're saying, you know, asking a question, you have the student or your child give an answer to that, support it with some evidence so that they're learning how to back up their reasons and their, their reasons for why they're giving that answer. And the next big thing we're really working on, on the secondary level, it's always been something we're trying to do, but this year is even more important because what COVID, I think at this point has taught everyone, all parents, including myself, you, whether you like it or not, you're now a co-teacher because you have your child with you at home sometimes, or they're at home every day and you're trying to help them to navigate and learn even with the teachers helping. So we're making sure to continue to establish productive two-way communication between school and home so that they have feedback, support on how they're learning, what they're learning, what are the assignments? What, what does my child need help with? What do they need to do? And how can I help my child? A lot of it, at least for the middle school, we have a lot of things with technology, as Dan was saying about onboarding families. So I keep repeating, reiterating to families, like on our middle school website, Mrs. Tasker has been huge in creating all little tiny tutorial videos, not just for students, but for families to be able to go on and say, how do I use this tool? What is this? Because Google Classroom didn't exist when we were in the classroom. Most of these tools did not exist. So parents trying to learn those and trying to teach their child at the same time could be difficult. So that is another focus for us.
So I'm going to say elementary stole our graduation photo at the bottom. Somebody, somebody found that earlier on in Google Images and put that in. So I like it though. I think, you know, when we think about Portrait of the Graduate, you know, we're thinking about all students pre-K through 12. This isn't just a high school thing. And I'm glad to see that we're all aligned and calibrating our efforts. So, you know, during this process with Tanya and I, when we were looking to, you know, build our presentation, we quickly realized that our individual school goals were, were aligned goals. And I think this is possible, you know, for, for several reasons. I think, you know, we do have a clear blueprint that the district follows, that we, we put together last year as a leadership team. And that has really helped focus, you know, our aspects in terms of what we're looking to do. And we truly are a district of one, 2,000 strong. So when you think about the aligning our efforts, last year it was a little different. You saw that there were differences between high school and middle school, maybe between the elementary schools and so on. But I think, you know, these are all, these are our kids. You know, it's not just my kids at the high school. These are all of our kids. You know, in order for us to have high school graduates, we need kindergarten graduates. So hopefully they're all wearing purple hats. I saw a blue one in there, Jenny. But this, again, to me, I think it's just a nice visual of Chargers Comm Fully Charged, charged through challenges. But we have all one common goal is, is to have students succeed and feel that they are ready and prepared for the real world, whether that's college, career, or, or any other piece. So that, we just wanted to share that image with you.
Thank you. So the last piece is pretty, is similar to, as well as what Jenny and Christina already had with the targeted professional development. So it's to build teacher and staff capacity, but it all starts with the instructional leadership team through looking at data, getting feedback from the staff and what do we need for our site-based professional development? And then using the time that we have for our PLCs and then also using the, the coach time. And I can tell, I'm, I know Mike would say the same thing, like Jeff doesn't stop. So not only is he working with teachers, but teachers are like, come here, can you help me with this? Or how about this? And so it just continues the cycle. And we're really excited to see how much of it that's being used and the teachers are finding that professional development to be helpful. Do you have any last comments, Mr. Dudek?
You said it perfectly. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So if anyone had any questions at this time?
Yeah, does anyone? I'm trying to work my way through here. Well, buddy. Okay.
Dan, can I just add something?
Sure.
Yeah, I think, yeah, one of the things I hope people have, have seen this evening is that we really have left the realm of being a system of individual schools.
Yeah.
And we have moved into becoming a very strong, united, aligned school system. Those are very, very different things. And you can see where each still has its own kind of unique piece, right? Because the schools are a little different, whether it's grade span or culture or what have you. But you can see direct alignment across and between our schools. And that, that truly is driven by the purpose of our work. And, and Mike mentioned it, and I, it was either Jenny or Christina mentioned it as well. It's, you know, it's all driven from the blueprint, which, you know, at the district level was created by our instructional leadership team. We visited with every single PLC, every teacher group from pre-K all the way to the high school to get, to get feedback on, you know, do we have the right focus? Is the, is the work we should be looking at, that we should be doing? Everyone's hand has touched this. And I think that's one of the, the most powerful pieces about a district our size is we can do that. Right? We have 2,000 people and, and that's something we can get our arms around. So, you know, I just wanted to really underscore that because I think the deeper that work continues in terms of developing that system, and Carrie will call them sisters and structures, systems and structures, but you know, the, the deeper we can continue that work, I think we're going to see stronger alignment and outcomes for all kids.
And, and I for one, who, who saw some of this work going on, you know, with, in relation to COVID this summer, I appreciated in, in Tanya's report in particular, although you all said it in your verbal ones, but in her written one, I think she said something like, this was shared with every single person. Let's see, this was reviewed, revised, and agreed upon by the entire school faculty members. And, you know, I can remember back to a time, and I'm sure Aaron can too, where, where as a school committee, we heard from those faculty members who said, we have no idea. You know, we just were not connected. They don't listen to us. They don't talk to us. As a matter of fact, when we were doing the interviews for the superintendent and some of us met with staff at each school, that was really a common thread. Like it was like, we don't have a voice. And, and clearly that's a change that, that we've seen. Now whether, you know, they take advantage of that voice, whether they participate, you know, is still an individual person. But to, to see that in Tanya's report and to hear that from everybody is really, it's really moving, actually. It's really kind of a neat thing to see and say, you know what? They're in this together. They're working together. And, you know, doing the best we can. And we'll keep getting better. Anyone else have any questions or comments or? Okay. So as a school committee, we do approve these school improvement plans, which, do we?
Yes.
Yeah. So we can do them as a package. We can do them individually. It will entertain a motion to do them however somebody wants to make a motion. Come on, Tammy, it's in you. Come on Tammy, it's in ya.
It's it's a lot to ask at this point of the week. Um so I, I mean, we can always discuss separate.
Sure, sure, sure.
I make a motion to approve the school improvement plans for the elementary level and secondary levels.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Aaron. All right, is there any discussion uh who? I'm sorry. Okay, any discussion on the elementary ones? We'll start there. The motions for all of them, but you'll. How about the secondary ones? Jeez, it's not even late yet, people. We go much later than this.
I just, I just had a comment, not necessarily a question. I I I guess I just wanted to say that I I appreciate um the fact that we're working so well at at both levels and sort of streamlining our goals and our in our practices so that there's not that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. Um is not as much of a transition, which um I think parents appreciate. It reduces the anxiety level for s- for students. And um knowing, you know, what's expected ahead of time and and just kind of, I think that's valuable. Especially as we are in the uh COVID era. So I appreciate their hard work in that area.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the school improvement plan that submitted to us, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you all very, very much.
Thanks, everybody. Uh and um we're going to shift gears a little bit um and talk about just very briefly our updated uh bully prevention and intervention plan. Um we uh spent quite a bit of time combing through this, uh Keith and Jan and I, and looking at the state regulations, looking at some other models, um looking at actual practices that we have in place. And uh have before you this evening, an updated uh district-wide bully prevention and intervention plan uh that meets all state's requirements, statutes, regulations. Uh and at the back of that, also uh attaching as an appendix, our bullying prevention intervention incident reporting reporting form um and our conclusions and uh from our investigation and investigatory form. So uh we would like to um see if there are any questions, concerns, comments on this. Um this can be found on our school district webpage. Um it's in its own file, so if there are uh families uh or community members listening in, uh please by all means, check it out. It is fully updated and it is in place. Uh we have also recently submitted it to the Department of Education, uh so they have an updated uh plan on file as well.
So this is a plan. Does the plan change the policy? Do we have a policy?
The plan does not change the policy.
Okay.
And I know there was some.
And this, and as I read it and I and I and I believe, but this is a plan that will or this is um an outline for bullying regardless of of source or connection. In other words, staff to staff, staff to student, student to student regardless, right?
Yes.
All encompassing.
Uh the only nuance is Title IX, which we've talked about at other meetings. If we would need to take a different direction in terms of what in um what our investigation, should there be a report? Mike?
So Jane, just to to tie in with the policy, the the existing policy, which is J I C F B, in case anyone's keeping track of that. Um in the policy, it references um that the superintendent will um shall oversee the development of a prevention and intervention plan. So it's it's vague in the policy.
Okay.
And so the plan, you know, the plan can be changed without changing the policy.
Perfect. Thank you, Tammy. Anybody else? Well, then I will entertain a motion to accept the updated bully prevention. Three times fast, bully prevention and intervention plan. So moved. Moved by Aaron.
Second by Tammy.
Second by Tammy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Jan and Keith for the help.
Yeah, that was pretty intensive.
Yes. Very, very much appreciated. Um glad this is in place. Um and lastly, uh for under my report is just an update uh from Karen, our uh lead nurse.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
If you speak right up close and personal.
I have to talk to him about maybe getting a different Chromebook so I don't have to shout at all of you. Um did everyone receive the sheet with changes to the handbook?
Yes.
So basically, the language in the COVID-19 exposure or positive test protocol was outdated with the current um practice. So I just went through and reworded things to reflect what the requirements are. So if anyone is considered to be a close contact, they must quarantine for fourteen days. That's not optional. There's no testing out of it. The only way that that may change is if you if you test positive, you then go to the positive COVID test protocol.
Which is ten days.
Yes, which is ten days. So depending on when someone was tested, their time could uh could be shortened from what the quarantine time was.
So but I just, I mean, I joke about that and I laugh, but I I want to be very clear. These aren't Karen or the school district. You know, these are our state and federal regulations about the way the policies work. So we're updating our our handbook to reflect that. And and we can talk all we want about how much that just like doesn't make any sense. But it's it's reflective of what is being put in front of us and those are the times that we live in.
So the other policy is the travel order. And I spoke with um our board of health nurse and she agreed that the seventy-two hour rule does not medically make any sense for people to be tested in a higher-risk state and then travel back to Massachusetts and turn that test in to return to school or work. So my proposal is to eliminate um that possibility, the what the state calls the seventy-two hour rule and require our families and staff to be tested once they return home.
Anybody have any questions for Karen?
Um I I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
The updated document.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to peruse the um peruse the website. Wh- where is this updated document link? On the.
For the travel order or the handbook?
The handbook. Are we updating it online as we go?
Well, after, we we haven't approved it yet, Tammy. We have to approve it first.
So the the, but it keeps getting, it's on, is it under the COVID-19? Oh, yeah, I see. Okay, so that link will get updated each time we update. Okay, I just making sure. If I share something out publicly, that it's updated. Thank you, sorry.
Any questions on either um protocol?
Karen, I I feel like a lot of the most, most of the questions that are are floating around there are things that we don't address, that aren't part of the the guide from the state. You know, like the uh Jason and I were talking about this earlier, the context, the contacts of the close contacts.
Oh.
You know? There's so many people are worried, I mean, and and in some cases, it makes total sense to ask the question because if Johnny, sibling one, is quarantined, but yet he shares a bunk bed with sibling two, but yet the guideline doesn't quarantine sibling two. You know, I think there's so many questions about that, just the the contact of the close contact, which this doesn't address because it, according to the whoever helps create this, it's not important. They they just go on their life as is, right?
Well, if if someone is properly quarantining, they should not be sharing a bedroom. Um the quarantine child should be separate from the other child. Whether, you know, and I talk to families about that and the board of health nurse talks to families about that. But we're not in their home policing and.
Well, I think the problem is the reality is that not everybody has a home that they can keep their kid in a separate bedroom uh and not use, you know, the same bathroom or, you know, it it's just the reality of life.
Yep.
But.
Yeah. Well, and it, you know, it's 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 the, okay, this student in this class, so the students in this class have to quarantine. But the students in other, in the same family don't. But I I guess my hope is that people use common sense. And if you're keeping your third grader home, because there's, you know, positive, they tested positive, then you're keeping your fifth grader home for that fourteen days as as well. I mean, you know, clearly that's a close, that is a close contact. I mean, it's a close contact of a close contact, but if if you're the one who's testing positive, you you need to keep your family quarantined. But, you know, it just.
I think that is the policy, Jane. I think it's the the people that are being notified that were close contacts to someone that became positive outside.
No, I get it. Yeah.
But my question is, with that policy allowing the siblings that weren't in the close contact to continue their normal activities, there were already three to five days on average that you didn't even know you were close contact to someone because of the way the test is coming back. So we can say they shouldn't be sharing a bedroom anymore, but they already went three days without even knowing they were a close contact to someone. So you were sitting at the dinner table, you were doing your daily activities with your family. So I think that's where it gets questionable um or uncomfortable maybe. But my question for you, Karen, is I I and I know I've asked you this before, but um are you having any, are you getting any feedback on access to testing? Um and the time it takes to get the test back from families that that we're now sending out into the world of quarantine?
Ben rolled the majority of tests are back within two days. There have been some that have been back the same day. And I think the longest was four or five days.
But where are they? Are they are they able to, you you called them today. Are they able to find a place to test today? Or do they and and or are they having trouble with that?
The majority of people can get a test the same day. Sometimes, you know, depending on the time of day, they may wait until morning. Um you know, like last evening, it was at, you know, around six o'clock when I was making notifications on a holiday and the majority of people were planning on going to death rather than looking for something last night. But for the most part, families that do want to get tested that same day are able to find places.
Karen, can I ask a question just to piggyback the testing question? Is is the recommendation, so if you notify someone today that they're a close contact of a positive case, is the recommendation to be tested the next day? Or is the recog, is it better to wait a couple of days so that you, you're still on quarantine? But is it, will you get a better, more accurate result if you wait a couple of days to be tested?
It all depends on the situation. And when the positive person showed symptoms or when they were tested, when we were notified about the test, ideally, you should be tested four to five days after exposure for the period of incubation.
Thank you. That's the that's the amount of time I've been hearing, but I feel like people are rushing to get tested. And then it it doesn't necessarily prove anything because it might just not be showing up yet.
Correct.
And any and anyone who is watching the governor and the commissioner, they are still saying, keep them in school. Bring them back, keep them in school. And don't travel. And don't have Thanksgiving dinner or have it outside. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to update our protocols and travel language.
So moved.
Second.
Uh who said second? Tammy?
Tammy.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye, sorry.
Oppose? Abstentions. Okay, thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Aaronworth.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. You've been awfully quiet this evening.
Was it my report? So I'll begin my report with the revenue review, which everyone should have in their packet. I'll try to keep things simple this evening. As of right now, our revenue streams are looking healthy. Everything is coming in as expected. Uh Dr. DeFalco would tell you that he and I were just moments ago, well, moments prior to this meeting, I should say, uh looking at the DLS cherry sheet estimates. The Senate Ways and Means budget was released late this afternoon and they just updated those cherry sheets. And actually, we are in a very good place with respect to our revenues. Who and I um discussed a little early budget, we were essentially back to a revenue that was exactly what we budgeted for without the use of that three hundred thousand dollars in E and D that we directed to offset the the any loss of chapter seventy. Um there were some changes with this iteration to the charter school reimbursement. And it did drop about uh seventeen thousand dollars. So as of right now, which is very absorbable, we have about a grand total on that charter school reimbursement of about twenty thousand dollars less than we were anticipating, but we. we a- actually have received more funds than anticipated in our entitlement grants. So, from a budgetary perspective, with revenues, we are in an excellent place. Does anyone have any questions about the revenue review? Okay. I will move on to the total expenditure review. Um, again, things are moving well with regards to our expenditures. We are on track and not extensively overspending in any major area. I do want to point out a few things with respect to this report. Um, as you can see, the report has expanded a little bit. I broke the report out into two pages. Not to make everything bigger-
Not to make it bigger.
Let me see. Just to put more little information. Small, small print information. Information is, is big, but the printing. So, um, what, what this change is, is actually in the past iterations of this report, when you scroll down the function codes to see where the expenditures were coming from, I listed function code seven thousand, and that encompassed all of our grants, our entitlement grants at least. And, and it was a little less precise than this newer iteration. Um, so you can see on the second page, I broke out all of our general entitlement grant expenditures. And those would be the Title One, Title Four, IDEA two forty, uh, the IDEA two sixty-two, and our Title Two. I also, given the nature of this year, uh, included our COVID nineteen grant expenditures. And I put a line separate for our emergency COVID expenditures. And I'll explain that a little bit further momentarily. Um, on the main sheet, the general fund expenditures, I did want to point out that if you were to look at the twenty-three oh five line, which is our classroom teachers, um, there are expenses in that line of about six thousand dollars in homeschool expenses and almost sixty thousand dollars in expenses for stipends that haven't been encumbered yet. So, that's gonna be something where still at this point, given all of the changes that we've undergone this year, there are funds that are not encumbered. Similarly, in the twenty-three ten line, which is our special education instructors, and our twenty-three thirty line, which is our instructional assistants, um, there are positions that were still being filled when I ran this report. In fact, in speaking with Monique today, she said, oh, I hope you updated the report. Uh, I just put in a bunch of new assistants that were hired. And I said, well, that report went and got printed last week. So, we'll update it a little further as we go along. Um, but my general point is in this report, uh, within the next couple of iterations, it will definitely pan out more, but we're not gonna be seeing a million dollars of leftover funds in our salary lines. So, not only are there the expenses that have yet to be encumbered, um, but the next time we present this report, Dr. DeFalco and I discussed just this morning, I'm also going to try to include the encumbrances for those salaries for the COVID specific staff that we've hired. And we discussed that we were planning on making sure that we had a way to maintain them for the entire year because that's what it's looking like we're gonna need with respect to our services. So, some of those, uh, part-time teachers that we were calling our, uh, helper teachers or our assistants, we're gonna maintain them in the budget, and those positions will be encumbered the next time. So, certainly where you might see a million dollars in current available balance from, uh, salary lines, that in itself will absorb about six hundred thousand dollars of those expenses. And as I mentioned, there are still other positions that we're filling and encumbering for. So, we are still looking in, in good shape, though. So, that is the key point to take away on our general fund expenditure, which is the first page. On the second page, the grant fund expenditure review, I would just point out you can see the COVID nineteen grant expenditures. Those are still being adjusted. So, that emergency COVID line, which you'll see right underneath, it shows a red number of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. I don't want the committee to think that we are in a, in a bad spot with our COVID spending. That represents a significant amount of money that hasn't been allocated to the grants. So, a good portion of that hundred and sixty-eight thousand will actually be reallocated to the E S S E R grant. So, that, that was one of those funding sources that allowed us to prepare for the upcoming year. So, some of our mask purchases and our disinfectant purchases and our sprayer purchases, they're all in that emergency COVID line, and they're going to be redistributed. Wanted to start presenting this information uh, in a separate bucket so that the committee could see it. And as we move forward, it'll be, uh, redistributed to where it will end up permanently for the funding source. But again, it's, we are still in a good place. Are there any questions about the expenditure report?
Matt, can you, can you clarify what the, um, the, the balance on the superintendent's office line, what is impacting that?
Yep, I absolutely can. That is for administrative assistant services. That reflects some of the changes and temporary help that we've had through the superintendent's office and, um, there are some leaves. Again, not to discuss specifics, but I think the committee is familiar with uh, some of us filling in with temporary additional assistance at the superintendent's office line. And, and a, a big chunk of that comes from those expenses.
Do we expect that the, the current available balance to balance better than it is now, or are we gonna have to pull from another line?
That will possibly balance a little bit, but we will, we will need to pull from another line to, to compensate there. That being said, I'm not concerned about it, uh, that amount of loss in that line because we definitely have areas where we can transfer money, uh, from when we need it.
Okay. And, and can you talk to the custodial number? So, that's, um, at forty-nine percent expended, and that's before snow?
Uh, some of that number, some of that money is encumbered, though. So, some of those overtime costs do get encumbered. Um, and that custodial, we've been, we've been looking into that. Um, there are some expenses that I think will be redistributed. At the same time, you can see from the facilities perspective, the four thousand series, which basically covers building and, uh, maintenance services. We will, we will incur savings in some of the other four thousand series lines, which will offset uh, significant, if not entire, portion of that over expense in the one custodial line. So, you can see off the top, off the bat, the utilities services, given electrical, uh, contracts that we've managed to procure, we are expecting that we'll see savings in that area. We're also expecting, um, some savings. As you can see, there was money budgeted in the maintenance of equipment. There, it's a point at, uh, in the year where the four thousand series, we can start redistributing some of that money and making sure that we're offsetting any, any areas where it seems like the expenses are a little higher right now.
Okay. And are any of these custodial, um, costs that are shown here, will any of those be offset by COVID?
So, some of-
Moneys?
Yeah, so the custodial expenses, um, our additional custodial, uh, help that we have is in one of the COVID lines. It is coming from the C B R F grant, which is that Fund Thirty-three. Those are additional to this expense amount. I, I will say that. So, our part-time custodians, they are not in this. That being said, this does include a lot of the overtime work that happened during the summer and getting buildings prepared for coming back with respect to our COVID plans. Um, so, there will be, there's the potential for some of those costs to be offset by, uh, Mima reimbursements.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
So, the next report that I have is the personnel report, simply to be submitted for record.
Thank you.
And the next item on my report is a wonderful thank you. We recently received notification that the district, specifically the high school, has received a donation in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be used for general use and supplies for the BMR High School Library. And this was given to us from the Philip Michael Waisleyan Trust. And I cannot speak personally to the type of person that this individual was, but we did reach out to some people that knew him from when he attended the district. And we actually got a lovely response from Fred Hartnett, who shared some words, and I'd like to share that for the community. And he wrote to us that Bill grew up on Menden Street in Blackstone. He was a gentle soul who, who was dedicated to making himself the best he could be. After graduating from the former Blackstone High School, he attended Worcester State University, where he studied education, and his teaching career spanned decades. He was motivated to make a difference in all of those people he encountered, and he did. Uh, and Fred said that he hopes this helps, and I think that it definitely does. And on behalf of the district, I know that we would like to thank, uh, Philip and his family for the, this very generous donation to the district, and I'm sure it will be put to good use.
Yes, absolutely. Very touching and very considerate. So, we do thank them.
And speaking of libraries, the next item on my report is some surplus materials and books. Um, so this is an action required item where you have a list of high school materials and middle school materials, which are very simply outdated resources that we would like to dispose of.
Yeah. Um, does everybody have that list? Entertain a motion to dispose of property. Moved by Jack. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions. I will note that Erin has left, so Erin is not included in that vote. Elvis has left the building. Okay. That it, Matt?
Uh, no, well, that is for my financial report.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's a shame that Erin will miss my facilities update, but I know she's with us in spirit.
There you go.
So, to start, I'm sure that there was some hearings of the heating issues that we recently encountered at both the complex and the high schools, so I did want to reference those. Uh, we did have some of our older unit vents that had heating coils that ruptured. Um, so we are currently, um, they were already repaired, just to be clear. That repair for all three of them with the materials and labor cost approximately twelve thousand dollars. Um, and one of the things that we are going to focus on is making sure that all of the circulator pumps are running consistently right now as we enter the colder seasons because that will impact whether or not there's significant, um, contraction and expansion of those heating coils. So, the custodians have been, uh, it's been discussed, and we have an action plan moving forward to try to limit these types of issues. That being said, those unit vents are, I believe, from nineteen sixty-something. Uh, and we can anticipate that there will be repairs that need to be made until uh, we address the HVAC systems on a larger global level. But that's not an immediate plan, which brings us to the second item on my report, which is the capital plan. So, things have been moving smoothly with that process. They have created, uh, Drummy Roseanne Anderson, our designers have submitted a draft plan. Uh, we have reviewed a bit of it, not as a full city, um, but we will continue to look at the draft, and then they will be present at the January fourteenth School Committee meeting to present their findings and a compiled plan for the committee. Last but not least, the Millville Boiler Project is moving along. Not without some of its own speed bumps, but it is moving along. As of right now, the tank is underground. It is filled in. The trench has been filled in, and now is to the point where, where we're hoping the dump truck will feel more comfortable driving over it to get the trash from the dumpster, uh, which I've been dealing with for the last few days, but it is looking like we'll have that taken care of by tomorrow. And the entire plant startup is scheduled to be, uh, commissioned on the twentieth of November. So, what that means is we will be filling the tank, hopefully, within the next couple of days. All of the piping and all of the equipment is going to be tested, and it'll be a complete run-up of the system and an assessment of the system, and it will be commissioned by, hopefully, the twentieth of November. So, that is good news, as we've had some nice warm weather. Uh, even though we have had temporary heat if needed at the, at the elementary school, but it'll be nice to know that things are solidified and we're ready to go for winter. Any questions with respect to the facilities report?
Well, okay.
And that concludes my report, and I'll go back to being quiet.
I'll figure out some way to get you back in. All right. Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Aaronworth and School Committee. Uh, we had school, uh, committee, committee assignments for subcommittees for the year. Um, and just to let you know, this is what I have to date. Um, on the Policy Committee, I have Tammy, um, with myself and Erin and really anyone else who, who wants to join in, in those meetings. They're always welcome, but Tammy's kind of spearheading that for us. Under Facilities, I have Sarah, Tara, and Erin. Um, under Teaching and Learning, I have Carrie and Tammy. Under Insurance, I have Erin. Under Unit C, I have, uh, Erin, Tam, Tammy, and myself. Under Superintendent Evaluations, I have Erin and myself. Under Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, uh, Tara, Sarah, and myself. And under Sick Bank, I have Jack and myself. Um, and so, if I missed anybody, or if you want to switch something, or you want to be included in, in something, um, and you weren't mentioned, please let me know. Um, and we will start pulling together particularly like Facilities Group um, to start some of those discussions, and I know Teaching and Learning, um, is, is always ongoing, so. Um, but it's partially the review of the math programs that we're looking at this year, so. Uh, that's where that stands. Again, if I missed you, please let me know. Uh, Sarah, Regional Agreement update.
Okay, it's a brief update, but an important one. We have our Blackstone Town, Special Town Meeting vote on Saturday at- We have our Blackstone town, special town meeting vote on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and it's at the BMR Auditorium. It'll be socially distanced and mask will be required. So I hope to see everyone there with their masks on.
We do.
Friends.
And it's a very short agenda, so it, it shouldn't be a very lengthy meeting. And we need, um, 50 of our best friends to have a quorum. So, um, it is really, really extremely important. I know this, um, whole process has, has dragged, dragged out. Nobody expected a COVID, um, crisis and the shutting down of, of meetings and buildings. But, um, a lot, a lot of work has gone into this agreement and a lot of time and a lot of effort, um, and a lot of compromise that really makes it something I think these communities can work with and the school district can work with. Um, but we need to, to get over that finish line. So it's really important that if you live in the town of Blackstone, we are asking for your attendance at the meeting and hoping that you'll be able to make it. But anybody who has friends, relatives, countrymen, or acquaintances in Blackstone, please ask them to attend.
And any students that are eligible voters.
Yeah, 18. Anybody 18 or over and lives in the town of Blackstone.
I have a few of those.
Yeah. Bring all, bring all of them, Tammy. Bring the relatives and the daughters. We were supposed to have voted on the technology, um, plan, the three-year plan. We did not do that, um, after Dan spoke, so I will entertain a motion to approve the technology plan.
So moved.
Moved by Tammy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Um, any discussion?
A question on that. Is there any budget associated with the approval, or just the ideas on the plan for now?
The ideas on the plan for now.
Okay.
With the direction we need to take.
Perfect.
Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the plan, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
You can't find the button fast enough for these votes.
I know. I'm watching you. I can see you guys, but I, I, I try to wait, but then I get impatient. Um, okay. We have other policy review, um, documents for review. Tammy, did you wanna just do them one at a time? What would you like to do?
Sure, we can do that. Do we, I just confirm for me, Jane, are we, should I be reading through it as we want it to be with the revisions or the additions? And the additions?
The additions, yes. Yeah. Amendments, the amendments, the...
Okay. So the first policy that we need to discuss is, um, JFABD, which is the homeless students' enrollments right and rights and services policy. I'm just trying to follow my code here. Red highlights show completely removed. I'm just, I don't know that I can, I'm in bad light, so forgive me if I, hold on. I have to turn my light on, because I can't tell the difference between red and pink.
Well, I did the same thing. I, I was like, and I even had to ask, I'm like, what, what, what am I looking at here?
Is the only red thing, red on this policy, Jason, number five? Am I reading, is anybody else seeing? The homeless students' enrollment rights and services? It looks like only five is red and everything else is pink. Is that what other people are seeing?
I mean, the only thing...
Same color to me.
Yeah. Waiting foster care placement, that was removed.
That was...
That's the only thing removed. So everything else is pink, is added in or changed?
Yes, so all the pink are either sa- pretty much same information, but they're making it more specific and more detailed for the policy, yes.
Okay. Okay, so only five.
This comes right from the act, correct? And I can even tell whatever, whatever, whatever?
Yes, some of the information is MASC updated this. It was brought to our attention in October of 19. So our, you know, our policy would need to be updated as well. If you look at the new policy, you'll see that there's a lot, a lot of new information. A lot of new procedures as well.
Okay. So I'll read through this. Okay. "To the extent practical and as required by law, the Blackstone Millville Regional School District will work with homeless students and their families to provide stability in school attendance and other services. Special attention will be given to ensuring..."
Wait, hold on, Tammy, one second. Are you reading, I think you're reading the old one. Wait a minute. Do I, what, oh, I don't know. The one with the red is the old one, the one with the, are you reading the red or the one with the yellow and blue?
I was reading the pink. That's the old one.
I think you wanna read the red one.
I wanna read the yellow-blue? Thank you for color coding it. I'm sorry that I'm... Thank you, Jane, for catching me before I went too far. I appreciate that.
No problem, because this is a dozer.
Okay. Yeah, updated, okay, okay. Just kidding. "As required by law, the district will work with homeless children in youth and unaccompanied, unaccompanied youth, collectively homeless students, as well as their families or legal guardians to provide stability in school attendance and other services. Special attention will be given to ensuring the enrollment and attendance of homeless students not currently attending school. Homeless students will be provided district services for which they are eligible, including Head Start and comparable preschool programs, Title I, similar state programs, special education, bilingual education, and vocational and technical education programs, gifted and talented programs, school nutrition programs, summer programming, and extracurricular activities. Homeless students are defined as lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, including: 1. Sharing the housing of other persons due to loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reason; 2. Living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or camping ground, camping grounds due to lack of alternative adequate accommodations; 3. Living in emergency or transitional shelters; 4. Being abandoned in hospitals; 5. Living in public or private places not designed for or ordinarily used as regular sleeping accommodations for human beings; 6. Living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, transportation stations, or similar settings; and 7. Migratory children living in conditions described in the previous examples. Students remaining in schools of origin. It is presumed to be in the best interest of homeless students to remain in their schools of origin, i.e. the school that the student was attending at the time he or she became homeless, or the last school the student attended prior to becoming homeless. Homeless students may continue to attend their school of origin for as long as they remain homeless or until the end of the academic year in which they obtain permanent housing." Am I, I'm reading the blue, right? For homeless students who complete... For homeless students who complete the final grade level served by the school of origin, the term "school of orig- origin" shall also include the receiving school in the same school district educating students at the next grade level. Homeless students are entitled to transportation comparable to that provided for all other students attending school in the district. The district will transport students who are sheltered or temporarily residing within the district to the student's school of origin. For homeless students attending a school of origin located outside the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing, the district in which the school of origin is located will coordinate the district, coordinate with the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to provide the transportation services necessary for the student. And these districts will divide the cost equally. Formally, homeless students who find permanent housing mid-school year will continue to receive transportation services until the end of the school year. Students enrolling in district where sheltered or temporarily residing. Parents or guardians may elect to enroll homeless students in the school district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing, rather than having the student remain in the school of origin. Enrollment changes for homeless students should take place immediately. If homeless students are unable to provide written proof of their shelter or temporary residence in the district, the homeless liaison will work with the family seeking enrollment to determine homelessness. Information regarding a homeless student's living arrangement shall be considered a student education record and not directory information. Records containing information about the homeless student's living arrangement may not be disclosed without the consent of the parent or, or satisfaction of another student privacy-related exemption. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exception. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible, and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's addressed confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records from the student's previous school. Attendance rights. By living in attendance areas, other student assignment policies or intra- and inter-district choice options are available to homeless families on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. If this, if dispute resolution. If the district disagrees with a parent or guardian's decision to keep a student enrolled in the school of origin and considers enrollment in the district where the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to be in the student's best interest, the district will explain to the parent in writing and in a language the parent can understand the rationale for its determination and provide parent with written notice of their rights to appeal the district's determination to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the pendency of any such appeal, the student should remain enrolled in the school selected by the parent or guardian, receiving transportation to school and access to other available services and programs. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Advisory on Homeless Education Assistance contains additional information about educating homeless students in the appeal process. The advisory is available at the following link, and I cannot read that if it's there. I, I don't read it, but there's a link that will be involved. Um, homeless liaison. The superintendent shall designate an appropriate staff person to the district's liaison for homeless students and their families. The district's liaison for homeless students and their families shall coordinate with local social service agencies that provide services to homeless children in youth and their families. Other school districts on issues of transportation and record transfers and the state and local housing agencies responsible for comprehensive housing affordability strategies. This coordination includes providing public notice of the educational rights of homeless students and locations such as schools, family shelters, and soup kitchens. The district liaison will also review and recommend amendments to district policies that may act as barriers to enrollment of homeless students. The liaison shall ensure district staff receive professional development and other support on issues involving homeless students.
Ew. Okay.
And the legal references McVenny, McKinney-Vento Act and Title I Part A.
We'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the policy as read.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Sarah. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Uh, should be Tara, I think, but, um, right, any discussion? Jill, are you the liaison?
I am.
Yep. And so Jill, for the folks listening, are there any, like, major shifts in this policy as far as? I, I tried to kind of compare the two when I first got it. And now that I just read it all in that robotic form, I've lost all thoughts.
So in the, the packet that I gave you, what I did was, you'll notice that some of the information is, it's new. It's just clarifying. Um, there's more information, um, it's making sure that we're being very proactive with families. I think the expectation was always there, but now it's just made very clear. Um, the thing that is different that was taken out has to do with foster. It's because it has its own, um, needs to have its own policy now.
Okay. Thank you. And so just to clarify the busing thing, so if a, if a student... We, we share the busing responsibility with where they're residing? If we're the origin, if we're the school of origin?
Yes, we share the cost.
Okay. Okay. And does, and do we use our own bus company, or is there a state bus company? I probably should know the answer to that, but...
There's no state bus company. We use, we, right now, it, it all depends who can take the route. Um, so we may use some of our out-of-district transportation companies to assist with that. It all depends on where the student is. Um, we've had students as far out, like, far, that sometimes their ride to school is 45 minutes. So, yep, so, and parents would like their children to continue. I mean, we've had students who have been seniors, or, do you know what I mean, juniors that they want?
Sure.
School year, so, but sometimes we do have to go outside of our normal transportation companies, because some of our companies, they're too local.
Okay. And I think some of the cases too, that people are far out, is that they plant, they wanna resettle here, but, but their mother lives in Springfield, or you know what I mean? So I think there are those cases where your temporary placement is just happens to be far, because that's who's available to help you out. But, okay. Thank you. And so then we also have two new policies.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
Motion to, so all those...
We didn't vote, okay.
No, we didn't vote. All those in favor of the policy as read by Tammy? For homeless students enrolled, rights, and services. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, uh... Anybody against? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, go ahead, Tammy.
Okay. New policy. Does not have a cool letter yet. Is educational opportunities for children in foster care. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the educational stability of students in foster care. Educational stability has a lasting impact on students' academic achievement and well-being, and the school committee is committed to supporting all efforts to ensure that students in foster care have equal access to high-quality, stable education experiences from preschool if offered through high school graduation. Irrespective of the location of a foster care placement, students in foster care will continue to attend their school of origin unless after a collaborative decision-making process it is determined to be in the student's best interest to enroll in and attend school in the district in which the student resides in foster care. Enrollment of students in the district where they reside in foster care will take place immediately upon such a determination. The district has designated a point of contact for students in foster care. The district and the point of contact will collaborate with DCF to ensure that students can access transportation and the other services to which they may be entitled. Best interest determination. Decisions about whether student in foster care should continue to attend the school of origin should be made collaboratively by DCF, the student as appropriate, the student's family and/or foster family, or, if different, the person authorized to make educational decisions on behalf of the student, the school and district of origin, and, when appropriate, the local district where the student is placed. Best interest determination should focus on the needs of each individual student and account for unique factors about the student and his or her foster care placement. his or her foster care placement. Every effort should be made to reach agreement regarding the appropriate school placement of a student in foster care. However, D C F will finalize the best interest determination if the relevant parties cannot agree on the best school for the student to attend. The district can seek review of D C F's decision by utilizing a foster care school selection dispute resolution process established by Desi and D C F. Decisions made through this process are not subject to review. To the extent feasible and appropriate, the district will ensure that a child remains in his or her school of origin while the disputes are being resolved to minimize disruptions and reduce the number of m- moves between schools. Transportation. The district of origin must collaborate with D C F on how transportation will be arranged and provided to ensure that students in foster care who need transportation to remain in their school of origin will receive such transportation while they are in foster care. Transportation options may include using Title One funds establishing reging- regional collaborations among districts, coordinating with the existing routes for transportation, seeking help from foster parents, et cetera. Absent other agreements between the district and D C F, the district of origin is responsible for providing transportation to and from the school of origin. Immediate enrollment. If it is in the best interest of a student in foster care to leave, leave the school of origin, the student must be immediately enrolled in the district in which he or she resides in foster ca- care. During enrollment of students in foster care, D C F representatives will present the district with a form indicating that the student is in foster care along with a state agency identification badge. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exception. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible, and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrolling, the district will immediately request available records from the student's previous school. Attendance rights by living in attendance areas, other student assignment policies or intra and inter-district choice options are available to students in foster care, homeless families, on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to the, to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. Legal references are every student succeeds act, ESSA, fostering connections to success in increasing adoptions act of two thousand eight. And um, this is recommended by M A S C.
I'll entertain a motion to approve as written, as read.
So moved.
Moved by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Hi Sarah.
Okay, thank you Sarah. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I think there's one more, one more.
More.
You got it Tammy.
Educational opportunities for military children. To facilitate the placement, enrollment, graduation, data co- collection, and provisions of special services for students transferring into or out of district because of their parents or guardians being on active duty in the U S Armed Services, the district supports and will implement its responsibilities as outlined in the, in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. The district believes it is appropriate to remove barriers to educational success imposed on children of military families resulting from frequent moves required by parents or guardians military deployment. Definitions. Children of military families, school-aged children enrolled in kindergarten through twelfth grade in the household of an active-duty member of the uniformed service of the United States, including members of the National Guard and Reserve serving on active duty. Deployment. The period one month before the service member's departure from their home station on military orders through six months after return to their home station. Educational records. Official records, files, and data directly related to a student and maintain- maintained by the school, including but not limited to records encompassing all the material kept in the student's cumulative folder. El- eligible students are children of military families, as well as the children of veterans who have been severely injured and medically discharged, and children of active-duty personnel who died on active duty. Children of retired active-duty personnel are also eligible to receive services for one year following the discharge due to severe injury or the retirement or death of an active military parent. The compact does not apply to children of inactive guard or reserves, veterans and retired personnel not included above, or U S Department of Defen- Defense personnel and other federal civil service employees and contract employees. The district's responsibility to eligible students include the following. Sending schools must send either official or unofficial records with the moving students, and district-receiving schools must use those records for immediate enrollment and educational placement. Upon enrollment of an eligible student, the receiving school must request official records and the sending school shall be shall respond within ten days with the records. Immunization of re- requirements of the district may be met within thirty days from the date of enrollment or be in progress. Receiving schools must initially honor placement of students in all courses from the sending school, sorry. These include but are not limited to Honors International Baccalaureate, Advanced Placement Vocational, Technical, and Career Pathway courses if those courses are offered in the receiving school and spaces available. The receiving schools must also initially honor placement of like programs to those of the students in the sending state, including but not limit, limited to gifted and talented programs and English as a second language programs. Receiving schools are not precluded from performing subsequent evaluations to ensure the apprope- appropriate placement and continued enrollment of the student in courses and programs. In compliance with federal law, the district will assume financial and program- programmatic responsibility for the special education programs of students with the existing I E Ps drafted in other states. As appropriate, the district will exercise the right to waive prerequisites for all courses and programs while also maintaining its right to reevaluate the student to ensure continued enrollment also as deemed appropriate. Students of active-duty personnel shall have additional excused absences as necessary for visitations relative to leave or deployment. An eligible student living with a non-custodial parent or other person standing in loco parentis shall be permitted to continue, continue to attend school in which he or she was enrolled while living with the custodial parent or guardian without any tuition fee imposed. The district high school will accept exit or end-of-year exams required from the sending state national norm reference tests or alternate testing instead of testing requirements for graduation in the district-receiving state. If this is not possible, the alternative provision of the Interstate Compact shall be followed to facilitate the on-time graduation of the student in according, in accordance with compact provisions. Legal reference is the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children.
Mass General Law fifteen E, okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept that as, as read. Moved by Jack, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, that sounded like Tara, was that Terry?
Tara.
Yep. Um, okay, any discussion? I just think it's weird, you have to send official records with the person, but then you have ten days to ask for the records. I just think it's weird. But anyway. I know it says official or unofficial, but. Um.
We have thirty-four students in our district with either active or retired military uh, uh, parents.
Wow.
If you wanna know what the numbers were.
Alright, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, thank you Tammy. Okay, uh, that concludes our business, is there any school committee member who has?
Jane, can I, can I go back to policy for a second?
You sure can.
Um, Jill, do you have all of these in electronic form that I can send over to be added to the M A, our policy manual? Are these in our? In our mailbox?
I do have it from the M A S C, I can send that over if you'd like. Like, without the colors in it, if that would be.
So you can actually. As long as I don't have to tell between pink and red, I'm good. Um, yeah, no, that would be great, because then I can just send it to um, our person to include, to upload for us.
Yep, I will send.
And, and add a handy dandy letter.
Sure, no problem.
Oh wait, I think I have these from, I might already have these Jill.
The blank, like without the color on them?
I'm not sure.
You only have color Tammy, but I.
I only have color, I, now I was thinking about it, I remember that email from long ago.
The two new, the two, two new ones you have, but I think the other one's only color.
Okay, that would be awesome Jill, so we can forward that out.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for December tenth. And I do want to have everyone get into their calendar. Uh, we have scheduled a January fourth at four P M. Um, and I know four P M is a little bit difficult for some people, but it's the, the group that's doing the training for us has to be done by five, so in order to get the training in, we have to start at four, but it's an equity workshop. And it is a webinar, so it will be done online, um, which hopefully will make it easier for the people who will struggle for four o'clock, but that's January fourth at four P M. And other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Tara, is there a second?
Second by Tammy.
Second by Tammy, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for sticking it out, long meeting, but a lot to accomplish, so thank you, and see you all on December tenth. Or no, on Saturday in Blackstone.
Saturday in Blackstone, right. None of us even said that in our forum.
Yeah.
What time is our meeting on December tenth?